Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March meeting of the CISM Capitol Improvements and Street Maintenance Committee. And I will call this meeting to order, and we will start out with item number one, approval of the minutes and the consent agenda. Is everybody okay with the minutes? Do we need any improvements or anything left out? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the consent agenda. Motion by Alder Rasmussen, do second by Alder Henke. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, none. And let me also say that we are missing one person tonight, Alder Denny. We don't know where he is. Okay, so we'll move on to discussion item number two, discussion and possible action on parking restrictions on Sherman Street. And I will start out by asking if there's anybody in the chambers that wishes to address the committee. Would you, ma'am, would you step up into the microphone and state your name and address, please?
I am Joan Baptiste. I own Floral Magic on the corner of Third and Sherman, 840 South Third Avenue. And I guess I'm here today because there is a parking issue with the neighbor across the road. Constantly has cars parked the full length, almost from the stop sign all the way back past his driveway most of the time. Makes it very difficult for us to get in and out of our back driveway. I mean, the cars come around that corner so fast, but yet we've got to take our time pulling out of there as to not to hit his vehicles. They're way out into the road half the time. And then there's cars coming from the west that are trying to get around all of his vehicles. And so the people coming around the corner have to sit and wait, you know, for those cars because they're in their lane. It's just, it's creating such a hazard for everybody, really. Like I said, we can't pull out of our parking lot safely. We can't have customers park in that back driveway because they can't back out safely, back onto the road to exit that back driveway of ours. So it's a problem. If those vehicles weren't there, they would more quickly be able to back out and get out of the way for all the oncoming traffic, but they can't park there because of that. So.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to address the committee? Alder Killian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Killian, older person, District Three. And I just would communicate tonight that I had received a citizen complaint about the parking matter a little over a year ago, and it was in regard to visibility and safety at that time, specifically related to exiting the alley nearby and just the inability of drivers to see what was around the corner. This is how it was conveyed to me, and it was my understanding that the part of the challenge was due to, at the time, I think, perhaps challenges with the parking guidance or signs being complied with there. And I'm not sure who parks there at any given time. It's not about the, any person. It would be about just the matter and the rule in general to make sure that there aren't visibility or safety challenges. And I would also add that, as you know, Mr. Chair, this was brought up by other citizens on multiple occasions at our neighborhood meeting at Jones. And if I recall accurately, in recent email strings, Officer Carr, who's our neighborhood officer there, had thought it would, agreed with the idea of bringing it to the committee. It seems like enforcement there has been incapable of really addressing those visibility and safety issues, if I understood Officer Carr correctly. So I would support whatever the appropriate measure would be to make sure that there's improved visibility and safety there.
Thank you, Alder Killian. Anybody else wish to address the committee on this item? I, if not, I would like to, before I turn it over, I'd like to go over a few things. I was kind of disappointed by the way this is represented in the packet this month, and I'll tell you why. Because I, as you see, I sent out an email yesterday morning that I received from Alder Killian that this has been a problem since January 24th of 2022. And I'm surprised that, you know, given that the picture that is included in the packet is from September of 2019, that plainly sees that there's a vehicle in violation there way back then. So it's pretty clear that this has been an ongoing problem. And I don't know why this email was not included in the packet. It's valuable information that this committee needs. I'm also, as Alder Killian brought up, the frustration that the law enforcement has had on this. I'm wondering why there's no police reports, no citations, no testimonial of what's been going on on this corner from the police, you know, included in our packet. I would also add that, you know, you go by this corner at near any given time, and 99% of the time, you will still see a violation on this lot. And also, where it says here, well, I saw PD and engineering received a request for possible parking restrictions. I spoke personally with Chief Blidman a week, about a week and a half ago on this, and he is fully supportive of any change that we decide to make on this corner. You know, the saying goes, things don't change if things don't change. And it also says in here, you know, why even bother? What I gathered is why even bother because of minimum conflicts on, you know? Well, why do we need minimal conflicts when we could have zero conflicts? And last and not least, where it says in here, you know, it says where, I guess it's, you know, it'll move parking from the north, from the south side of the street to the north side of the street. There has been no parking on the north side of the street for as long as I can remember. And, you know, I would like to go on with some of the safety concerns that I've received and that I've witnessed. I use this street on a regular basis. I use this corner on a regular basis. It's a very busy corner. I talked to the flower shop, and they've echoed their concerns about the parking. They've also, as of late, there's been a snowmobile trailer that's been parked on the street, not even hooked up to a vehicle. And it's a black snowmobile trailer, which is wider than the vehicles, and, you know, it kind of blends right in with the street, and you can't hardly see it. And as a matter of fact, I received a phone call yesterday from one of Alder Killian's constituents stating that her husband had almost hit this trailer because it was the visibility, they couldn't see it. I've witnessed city buses coming around the corner, and, you know, with oncoming traffic, it's been a real challenge. I don't think that city streets ought to be used for private driveways. I've witnessed vehicles being parked on the street for weeks at a time and not being moved so much that tires have gone flat on the vehicles without them being moved. And just the concerns about not obeying the parking sign. You go by there 99% of the time, you know, they're just a foot or two or whatever past the sign just to, I don't know, spite the city? I don't, I don't know. But those are my concerns, and those are what I have, what I have witnessed and what I have heard. And with that, I'll turn over the discussion to the committee. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. With the photos we have in the packet, at least one of the photos actually shows the violation in progress. The first one looks like the van is situated east of the no parking sign. So, I mean, that, as long ago as that photo was taken, clearly that sign wasn't being obeyed. But, you know, I guess my concern, since you've seen conflict with the bus, is that ordinarily on a street like this, when we have trouble with the conflict between traffic or parking and the bus, we also have it with snowplows and with garbage pickup. And so those things all kind of go hand in hand. Now, from this one picture that we have in the packet, I don't know if this motor home is present year-round, but it would seem to me that that must be sitting in the homeowner's driveway? And so...
Hold on. That, this is a very old picture. That motor home's long gone.
It is gone, okay.
There's a camper there now. A pool behind camper, so...
So something else has taken up the space where the cars probably should be?
Yes.
For off-street parking. Does this home have a garage?
Yes.
Okay, so, so then, there's an alternative. See, my concern always when we go to change parking is, does the homeowner have other options? Do they have a garage? Do they have a decent length driveway? Or do they lack those things? But if the driveway is just being utilized for other things, and these cars are just forced out because of that storage, that's a choice that's getting made there. So, you know, if there is visibility problems for the neighbors, there's trouble with access across the street, and this seems to happen year-round, it would make sense, then, that we would just restrict parking east of the alley entirely. I mean, it just, if there's no parking already on the north side, that then is going to force these folks to use their driveway or move the storage and use the driveway properly, I think. You know, because the alley must be just west of the telephone poles here in the photo.
I would, Alder Rasmussen, I would recommend, I would recommend no parking from Fourth Avenue to Third.
For the whole side?
The whole side, because if you're gonna, if you're gonna move the traffic from, if you're gonna move the traffic, you're gonna only, you're going to move the blind spot to the other side, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, if they just move back a half block.
If they just move back, if they move from one side of the alley to the other side of the alley, you're still going to have a visibility problem getting in and out of it. No matter if it's one car a day or 20 cars a day, it's still a risk.
Well, and we've had situations with campers and trailers and things parked in residential areas in other neighborhoods where those homeowners were forced to find alternative storage, whether it's seasonal storage or whatever it is, so that they could properly utilize their driveway. I don't know what these folks would do in the case of a snow emergency, but if there were one when this picture was taken, that photo would be worth $300. So, I mean, it just seems to me like that, that needs to get, I guess the only way we're going to solve it is with a restriction, but if we put a parking restriction up and they don't obey it, then we're right back to enforcement. So if we change it, the PD is going to have to be vigilant about watching to make sure that there's nothing still out there. So I wouldn't be opposed to changing it. My first thought was if this was a winter-only problem, we could solve it with a seasonal thing. But these pictures were taken in the summer. There isn't even any snow, and it's all parked there, so...
Well, and as I said, the, some of these vehicles, they don't move for weeks on end.
Yeah.
I just want to point out, you had said parking is not allowed on the north side. There hasn't been parking. That's, that, parking is allowed on the north side of Sherman Street. It's only restricted 65 feet back from the intersection on both sides, so...
I don't believe, I would suggest you take a drive down there and check your sign.
Is it signed for no parking?
Yeah.
It's not in an ordinance.
Okay, so we'd probably have to clean that up. If there is no parking posted out there, and it's not in the parking ordinance, we'd have to amend the ordinance to include whatever signage is already out there. It looks like there's at least one no parking sign next to the tree in the one photo where you can see the flower shop. That must be the one you're referring to that's 65 feet off the corner?
Correct.
But if there's, and these photos are old, too, so there could be signage out there on that north side, but it's hard...
I believe there is signage. I believe the whole side of the street. I travel that quite frequently, sometimes once, two, three times a day, and there's, I'm almost positive that there's no parking on the north side of the street.
Hmm. I would just, with this many vehicles and with the camper and the trailer and all these things, I would be curious how these folks comply with a snow emergency. I mean, there's, it seems there's no way. And so, you know, that, it does appear that this whole area is being utilized for continual parking and not just, you know, guests or visitors or occasional parking or whatever. I mean, if they're out there year-round, that's a problem for everyone else.
Alder, anybody else have any comments on Alder Henke?
Is there parking on both sides of Third Avenue there? Does it go all the way down that far?
So they could park on Third? Third is awfully wide there.
I know it is to the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
I don't know if it goes that far south. I think it does.
Have we heard anything back from either GPW or Metro Ride as far as what their experience has been with this? Do they find that there's a pinch point there?
I haven't, I hadn't checked with them, but I suppose I could have asked to speak with the drivers that go around that corner. I'm just going by what I witnessed.
Yeah.
And I guess that's why the signs are, from my understanding, that's why those signs are 65 feet back. So I, when I personally drove it, you know, if you're 65 feet back from Third Street, there's really not a safety issue. I mean, because you're, the intersection's wide open from 60, well, he, I would agree that that person, I was out there again today, and that with their park there, they are right up against that sign or maybe a foot or two in front of it, but that still gives you 60-some feet back from the intersection. So it's really not a safety issue with Third Avenue, as far as, if that's what we're saying, but...
Well, and now that we have snow storage there, did you happen to see, is that, how far out is this stuff from the curb now? I mean, snow storage makes everything narrower.
Well, and then when you have a snowmobile trailer sticking out there?
Yeah.
That's even worse.
I guess my concern with it was pushing the, you know, the alley's low volume, so it's really not, I mean, any alley that you park next to, anywhere in the city, there's hundreds of alleys. This could be an issue. And my concern with posting the snow parking would be just to push the parking somewhere else. And where is he gonna, where is this individual going to go? Down the block, across the road to a different block? I don't know that we're solving a problem with posting the snow parking. I mean, that's up to you what you want to do, but I just didn't see, Sherman Street is obviously a little higher volume, but what do you, you know, you, I think the complaint that I read in the email was hard time visibility coming out of the alley. Well, I guess you could use that argument at any alley in the city where somebody's parked. So I didn't really see that as a safety concern just because of the low volume of the alley. But they're always there, so I, you know, I guess it just opened up kind of a, maybe a, you know, a situation where anybody who wants no parking because their neighbor's parking there, that request could come to this committee at just about any street where it has an alley. So, I mean, I understand it's a reoccurring problem, and this is probably a little bit more over the top because I visited it several times before this, and there are cars always parked there. I would confirm that. So that's what kind of makes it a little bit extraordinary is that this individual apparently has a lot of vehicles and does park out there continuously.
Well, and the fact that I received a blessing, so to speak, from the chief of police, too, that he would support any change there, because I almost wish that the police department were here to discuss their, their...
We do have, Jillian from the police department is here.
Sorry, come here. So, yep, we are aware of this issue, and it's been an ongoing issue for some time. I know our parking specialist is aware of it and goes by frequently and cites vehicles or do whatever he can.
When we talk about low volume in the alley, do any of the homes adjacent to the alley, is that their access to their garage? Or are the driveways and the garages entering off of the avenues?
I can't answer that. I haven't been down that alley. Have you, Alder Killian? Have you been down that alley?
I know on Third, I think a lot of them have garages that come out on Third, but I don't know where they're at with Fourth.
I can't say with 100% certainty tonight, but based on the other alleys in the neighborhood, it would not surprise me if there was access in the alley to garages.
Especially in the middle. The houses in the middle seem to have that the most.
And, Mr. Chair, if you'd allow, may I make one more additional comment?
Certainly me.
Thank you. You know, I think Mr. Wazalowski brought up an interesting point just about kind of global issues in the city and so forth, and I guess my unsolicited input to the committee, if it is not doing so already, may be to kind of, to at least maybe in a more systematic way quantify and tabulate, like if there's a situation like this, the frequency of complaints we're getting from citizens and residents who are often the best eyes and ears on the ground, and to use that as a barometer of, in addition to what the police department just stated about the frequency of citations, I think statistically, kind of compiling and tabulating those things would probably be a good barometer of where there are indeed problem areas, so it's not used arbitrarily as Mr. Wazalowski had stated. But I think in this case, had we, if we had had a kind of quantitative system that based on the citizen complaints and the volume of police citations, it would probably hit that threshold had one existed historically. Thank you.
So, given that, would, would this committee be, say, in favor of tabling this, maybe until next month, until we can possibly get some reports from the, we can get some accurate data from the police department, as Alder Killian had spoken for, and perhaps talk to the bus drivers and stuff from, and see Alder Denny?
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that. This came up kind of late in the game. I didn't get a chance to drive by there myself, but what you described, a trailer being there, a camper being there, there's an RV there in the picture, and I think that's in violation of the current city ordinance. So, I mean, that's a potential restriction coming out of that alley to be able to see. It's a large vehicle. So, I mean, there, my concern would be that we're making a change to parking when it's kind of a specific case of other causes in here that's potentially... Is that me? Not me?
No, that's me.
So I would favor postponing this to gather a little more information. I don't like what I see with that vehicle, if that's just there overnight, or it sounds like it's there pretty frequently, and that's clearly not where it belongs in the city.
Yes, Alder Gissman?
So is the house on Sherman Street, is that a rental of some sort? There's a house on Sherman Street, and it seems like the garage is, on the alley side, is a garage for the house on Third Avenue. So, I mean, there's just a lot of cars in these two, which would be really one property. I, you know, they, you divided the lots at one time. I think, I think the case has been made that, I think that there's something that needs to be made, you know, with regard to the parking there. And I'm not against delaying it, but I think the need, and I think the house on Third Avenue on the corner is also a rental, I think, it looks like that. So there is a lot of cars that have to basically share that two-space, two-car-space driveway on the alley side. So, you know, this is a problem that we have all over the city with rentals that need more parking than, than there is, so, but I think we have to take care of the issue. I think we have to listen to the neighbors, and I think that we, I'm not against delaying it. Like I said, I'm not against delaying it, but I think, I think it's pretty obvious what, where this, this needs to be corrected.
Yes, Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. It would seem to me that if we did put a parking restriction in this block, I mean, realistically, if we were to go out and ask, anytime there's a pinch point, if we were going to ask plow drivers or Metro Ride or the garbage pickup crew what they would like to see happen, anytime there's less vehicles in their path, their life is easier. Like, everything they need to do is easier. It's easier to get in, get out, whatever they need to do. So I would certainly think that if we ask them, they would respond positively to just less vehicles in the way in general. So I feel like we could pretty much depend on that feedback because it's just, in general, less obstructions, everything else is more smooth. So, you know, I feel like if everyone is of the mind that they want to address the situation because it's, it's a habitual problem, it isn't just, like, it feels like if there's stuff here all the time, the surrounding area is never getting any relief from that situation. So I, I feel like we could act on it tonight without the input from the departments because I think we know what they might tell us. So I would make a motion that we restrict parking on the south side of Sherman from Third Avenue to Fourth Avenue.
All right. Thank you, Alder Rasmussen. I have, we have a motion by Alder Rasmussen to restrict parking from Third Avenue to Fourth Avenue. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. And then I have a question.
Thank you, Alder Gissman.
So then we're going all the way back to Fourth Avenue instead of just the alley, because that alley divides that block. I mean, if we just take it back from the alley, all that parking pressure is going to be on the west side of the alley back to Fourth, so you're taking that all the way back to Fourth Avenue?
Well, and I think Chairman Larson made a valid point in that all these cars could just move across the alley to the other side and then inconvenience the other neighbor. So I think that we need a complete solution because I think if we just push it, we're going to have the same problem, just different complainants. So it would make sense that we would do the whole side.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion passes four to one. Going on to item number three, discussion and possible action on sale of 123 Thomas Street. Oh, that's right. We are pulling this one because it has, we are pulling item number three because it has to go to the planning committee. Discussion, possible action on item four, discussion and possible action on accepting right-of-way for Washington Street from 14th Street to Kickbush Street. Allen?
The committee's seen this proposal before, but they are looking to dedicate this right-of-way on the enclosed CSM to extend Washington Street, basically from 14th Street to Kickbush. So what we'd be looking was a motion to accept that, the dedication of the right-of-way.
We already kind of discussed this, didn't we?
Yes, it has been, yeah, it was, but this is the formal, this would be the formal acceptance of that right-of-way.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion, or Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I, since the land dedication would be coming from the school district, and they've proposed to construct it under the condition that we maintain it, it certainly makes sense. Looks like it would relieve some traffic pressure around the school for entry and exit, so I'll make a motion that we accept the right-of-way dedication.
All right. Motion is made and seconded by, motion made by Alder Rasmussen and seconded by Alder Henke to approve the engineering recommendation on item number four. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh.
Aye.
Oh, yes, Gary, did you have a question?
So does it, right-of-way, does that, because that, in prior meetings, we had talked about a sidewalk. So is this part of the design now, or is this, do we know? Because I thought we were going, where we, I'm trying to recall our conversation, but I thought our conversations dealt with some kind of a sidewalk.
It did.
Preferably on the south side or that, the lower part. But I, I don't know if I'm seeing that on the map or not. Just a query, Allen, I'm not sure.
Yep. No, this map isn't showing the design of the street. It's just dedicating the right-of-way, which is a standard 60 feet to construct that right-of-way. So we have not seen the final plans on that. Those, I was told today will be coming here by the end of the month, and I could bring those back. I think the committee made recommendations to include a sidewalk and a crosswalk, and so those things, I anticipate that they'll all show up in the plans. I have not seen those yet, but we can bring those plans back to CISM.
But the, but the land itself would be wider, or that, the width would be wide enough for, if indeed, for a sidewalk of some sort?
Your standard right-of-way on most of your streets is 60 to 66 feet, so it would be wide enough, correct, to construct a sidewalk and a roadway.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of accepting item... All those in favor of accepting item, agenda item four, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? That passes. Item number five, discussion and possible action on alternative options for planter location on the northwest corner of Third Street and Jefferson Street. Here.
Yeah. Thanks, Lou. So last year, this is really coming forward from the businesses down there, in particular Malarky's Tyler. He wasn't able to be here tonight. But last year, he approached staff as he's doing an outdoor venue with some live music on the sidewalk. And one of the, one of the things that we were looking at, he'd like to expand that, to do that more weekends on Saturdays. We met with the River District as well. And so with that planter, the way it is, it's a raised planter. And so one of the options would be if we removed that raised area of the planter and created a flat area so that there would be more space for the outdoor venue along with the, the dining. There's, there's also, you can see a monument sign there as well. And so I think as, as things possibly expand and, and as Tyler wants to, to do this more into the evenings and stuff, which he's already doing, I think, I wanted to bring this forward right now just as a consideration for the committee. If they would, you know, want to see something more that would accommodate more pedestrians and stuff outside and in different areas. The planter has a couple of trees in it and some evergreens. It's not, you know, well maintained and, but.
Yes, Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I, I agree that there's probably room for this planter to move on. It, it is not, it is more of a maintenance issue than anything and it is in the way. Even when they started to put out, a couple of years ago, put out the painted pianos, when the piano was out there, it was, this was all in the way. It's like too much stuff on this corner. And so if there's a better way to use these spaces for small public gatherings, you know, just like we've worked with him on the parklet and a number of things where, you know, they can better utilize their outdoor space, it makes sense that we would consider that. If this was something that was, you know, of a much larger, larger scale and a heightened level of design, I might be resistant to take it out because of the investment, but it really isn't. It's concrete curbing with a couple of plants. It's nothing special. So, I mean, if it would enhance the activity of the environment down there, our goal for those spaces is to have active urban spaces where people can gather and enjoy, I would be okay with that leaving. I guess I'd make a motion to approve that staff could remove the planter and the monument sign if they locate a site to put it.
Thank you, Alder Rasmussen. We have a motion to remove the planter. Do I have a second? Second by Alder Henke. Yes, Alder Denny?
Yeah, I've got a question. Is, what was the original intent of this? Is there any security concern or safety concern that we put these in? I see there's some on the other side, to prevent vehicle traffic to, from going up in there? Or are we, do we have, and maybe do we have a place to relocate this, to reuse it?
I don't know that, you know, I mean, we could keep some of the products and stuff, you know, if it's some precast stuff. The fencing and stuff that's on top of it is, probably needs to be recoded and stuff. If it's still adequate, we can store that. They're there for decorations and, you know, is why they were installed. You know, when we look at the areas down around the mall that we're providing with a wider right of way, more open space for pedestrians, things like that, you know, I, I think that seems to be where the downtown is going, kind of opening up the outside, you know, areas for visibility and otherwise and, and more interaction for different areas. And I think this would help with that. So.
Alder Gisselman, did you have something you wanted to add? Okay. Motion is made. Did we have a second? Second by Alder Henke. All those in favor of removing the planter from agenda item five. Yes, Alder Denny?
Sorry, I have one hang, hang question. Oh, you addressed the cost in here, Eric. The city would do this?
Yeah, we would do this in-house with our staff.
All right. Sorry, go ahead.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will go on to item number six, discussion and possible action on state municipal agreement, agreement for business campus trail, east-west connector, Innovation Way to 72nd Avenue. And this would be TJ.
Yep. All right. So back in January, I brought this SMA in front of CISM for consideration. This original grant for the SMA was, as I explained, applied for prior to finding out how prices were going to increase due to inflation and construction costs. So we were well short of what the actual construction cost would be. So I brought forth a couple of different options. The acceptable option or what CISM agreed to was to apply for a change management request for the section of trail from 72nd Avenue to 84th Avenue. That change management request was approved and is included in the packet, which will be acted as an addendum to the original SMA. So we will be looking to approve the original SMA with the change management request. And we recommend approval based on our previous discussions.
Yes, Lisa?
Thank you. I would make a motion that we go ahead and approve the SMA with the revision.
Okay. Motion has been made. Do I have a second? Second by Alder Gisselman. All those in favor of approving the SMA signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That passes unanimously as well. Number eight is discussion and possible action on amending section 10.20.040, no parking during snow removal.
Lou, you missed number seven.
Oh, I missed number seven. I'm sorry. Discussion and possible action on approval, on approving government responsibility resolution, application of an urban, no non-point source UNPS and stormwater management construction grant. Yes, TJ?
Take this one again. So then, back in December, and then previously to that, I presented on a possible stormwater utility and then on the possibility of a grant helping us move forward with that. So I presented on the, the possible grant, which would be a planning grant that would help us update our stormwater management plan, do some LEAF credit analysis to help us meet our TP reductions goals, and then also do a feasibility study for that stormwater utility. To apply for this grant, this resolution is required by DNR to give a city staff member here, it is the project engineer, to act on behalf of the city. So it's just approval of this resolution to apply for the grant.
Thank you, TJ. Discussion. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Alder Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Alder Denny. All those in favor of moving forward with this item number seven, the staff recommends approval of government responsibility resolution, resolution, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you. That goes unanimously as well. Now onto item eight, discussion and possible action on amending section 10 dot 20 dot 040, no parking during snow removal. This came to me from Alder McElhenney. She has constituents, she brought up a point that these older homes that are, you know, turned into duplexes and stuff and people have no place to put their vehicles during a snow emergency and, and due to the fact that I believe the police department wrote over 300 tickets during the snow emergency that perhaps we could allow some relief for these people that need a place to put for their cars during these snow emergencies. And perhaps we could use one of the parking ramps, probably preferably one of the ones that, that are around the mall that are not currently being used a lot and possibly, and, and was recommended that there be no, this would be on, I'm looking for the right word, where there's no, there's no restrictions. Your person can just go in there. It's on your honor, the honor system, basically. And that we would put that there on a honor system and perhaps, I'm looking at a, maybe a 24 to 48 hour grant grace period after the snow emergency to get those vehicles out of there. And with that, I'll open up a discussion.
I have just a question. So in some of the ramps, I think it would depend on which ramp it is. Some of them, we have sold monthly permits for people to park for work. And so I think if Alder McElhenney's wish is that, you know, we would during the period of snow emergency, offer the ramp structures for free parking for a defined period, we would have to at least have some numbers as far as what the daily parking utilization is for the permit holders. Because when we sell the permit, we basically guarantee that there's going to be somewhere for that person to use. And if that's no emergency is during the week when these folks need to get in, then I think any of that free parking, if there's going to be that happening, those folks would have to be out of there before the business day starts. Like in when the business day ends and out when it begins. So, you know, I mean, if you wanted to offer it up, say between, you know, 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM, I think that's one thing. But, you know, I think what the, we do have facilities that are underutilized. And for now, at least for a few years, some of them will continue to be underutilized. So I think the situation though is if she has folks in her district way on the northeast side, and the idea is that those people would be able to take their vehicle downtown and leave it locked during the snow emergency and then find a way to get themselves back home while inconvenient, I suppose it would be an option. I don't know how many people would actually use that from that far away. I'm not sure what she's trying to get at for, you know, I mean, I think right now, I think with, it's probably within the authority of our management team to, to decide to open up a ramp for public use without our approval, is it not?
Are you asking me or are you asking Eric?
I'm asking Eric, I think.
Yeah.
I don't think so. You know, I, I think that, you know, the snow emergency is pretty clear, right? In the ramps, you can park in them for free at night.
Right.
Already. And so it would be more, I think the ask was is that during the snow emergency, if that snow emergency carried over, let's say for 18, 24 hours, right, that they would not be sighted during that time period for parking in the ramps. To, to your point, it would be like, we would probably have to look at different levels that would be open to that because you're right, the permitted parkers have, you know, would, would have priority, I would think.
Yes.
And so, and then which ramps that, that they would be. So, but yeah, I think any changes to, you know, not cite people or not do that, I think the committee council is going to have, I don't think that we can do that as from a staff perspective. I don't.
It's a little bit of an odd, an odd ask because snow emergency is something that the staff has always used judiciously. I mean, we don't have snow emergency very often. We only ask for the public's cooperation a couple of days a year. We had one year where it was an awful lot of days because there was an unprecedented amount of snow. But in general, if we have this two or three days of winter, it's not widely used. And so I, I absolutely think the hundred dollar tickets are just and need to happen because it is, in all of those 325 tickets, those were not all people that had nowhere to go. In fact, I summoned the parking patrol to my neighborhood to write up four of them at high noon adjacent to the two parking lots at the Columns Apartments because the plow couldn't get in. So, you know, I think it's a lot of it is people don't pay attention and think they're not going to get caught. So, you know, I don't have a whole lot of sympathy for the hundred dollar tickets, I'll say. But, and I'll also say, I think that, you know, if there were certain underutilized parking facilities, I say the top levels of a ramp or whatever, if we wanted to open that up so people could put a car in there, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I think we just have to make sure that we have preference given to parking stalls for people who paid for permits. And, you know, the Sears ramp has some of that, Jefferson Street ramp has some of that. Penny's probably not so much. But I think, you know, and I also think the City Square Office Center ramp, that one has more utilization from the folks working in there as well. So I think we'd have to be, be careful what we offer. But if it was a level or two here and there, it might work.
Tara, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, I was just going to say Alder Rasmussen asked if the staff had the authority to just, you know, make the changes to the parking ramps. And chapter 10.48 sets forth a lot of ordinances about utilization of the ramps and paying and what times and days you don't have to pay. So eventually, if you do want to make these changes, not only would we have to make changes to the snow emergency, we'd also have to make changes to chapter 10.48 in order to allow those sort of provisions to let people park in there for a couple of days or not get ticketed.
As a follow-up, could it be something where, say, we decide, we take a look at what our utilization is and what's available? If we would want to put in some type of blanket enabling language that would perhaps say, at the discretion of the public works director or the, you know, parking utility supervisor, whomever, that in the event of a snow emergency, you know, level four and five of such and such ramp may be offered to the public for free parking for the duration of the snow emergency. I mean, you have to be general, but could we set it such that we wouldn't have to, we could be very specific for when the rules get amended and when they don't?
You, you can put in some general overriding things. We'd probably have to do it in chapter 10.48 and in, in the snow. But as long as it works factually, I mean, this isn't something like we have to watch out for the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution or something. You can pretty much design whatever you want, just as long as you make sure you go and clean up the other ordinance sections. So there isn't a conflict.
Okay. I wouldn't be opposed as long as we would have somebody figure out what levels we can afford to offer up.
So, in other words, we should probably table this to find out what we have available first and then, and then come bring it, bring it back?
It would probably be a good idea to have the parking staff and public works decide what levels would be best suited for this if we intended to do it. And at least get a report back so that, I mean, I think we're going to find that there's less available than we think. I think we probably have some space at Penny's. We probably have some space in the upper levels at Sears or Jefferson Street. And it's going to be something we'll have to keep one eye on because once the T-Wall building opens and they're all using Sears, I think then we're going to have a different conundrum. So we probably have something we could work out for a couple of years.
Yes, Alder Denny?
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think it, it's a good idea, I think, in my opinion. And it wouldn't necessarily be all cars strictly from the Riverview neighborhood. If we're talking, I, I own three vehicles and I'm in uncovered parking. I'd potentially take advantage of just so I don't have to dig out three cars. Cause I'm, you know, and I live close enough, I could go down there. But I have a, I think we need to look at and see how much space. Certainly we're not making money on the ramps as they are. We're under utilizing them. Let's take a look at, you're talking three, two, three days a year maybe max. But it's an option, you know, it saves somebody 100 bucks. What would we fine them if they stayed overnight and/or violated that rule? I don't know what, where we get into. I don't, I guess we're not charging 100 bucks for somebody who overstays parking in the ramp.
During the night is free, right? Yeah, during the night is free and then the first ticket is forgiven for the year. And then I can't remember the next one. I don't know, Jillian, you remember? Five dollars. So, and then they can also register at the kiosks already and then just pay anything beyond the two hours, like during the day when enforcement is there. So, but if you'd like, I mean, staff can bring back some options, you know, that might work, that may not require an ordinance change, you know, and other items that are maybe more extensive that might. So if that.
Alder Gisselman?
Just to be sort of clear, we're here.
Is your mic on?
It is not. Thank you. We, well, we think of amending, amending the ordinance itself or, because the agenda's that, on amending section, I think that the way that, on amending section, I think that the way, the snow emergency is pretty much the way I would like to see it with regard to the ordinance. I'm not, I think if we bring it back, I think the, the wording on that agenda has to be a little bit more clearer, clearly stated because I was confused. I, I would hope that we wouldn't, because I think the authority that we have with regard to snow emergencies is finally crafted. And I know my streets in my neighborhood, the streets were clear. I mean, there, a few, you know, a lot of cars found their way to other spots in the city during that snow emergency. A lot of cars. And, and I'm just, you know, with regard to the, the ramps are all fine, but I'm, I was confused about exactly how we were gonna change that. And I hope we don't, because I think it really works well.
You know, just going on what you had said, Alder Gisselman, is reverting back to item two on the agenda, those vehicles that were in question on item, they found a way off the street too. You know? And, and it was kinda strange because I did receive complaints about people getting hundred dollar tickets and, and the people I got complaints from were outside for, because their car was parked on a street outside a bar because it was pool night. And, so, what's, what's the committee's wish on this? Would we wish to, to send this back and see what's available?
Could we just defer until next month and get the parking report and then maybe decide if we wanna do something with a couple of, maybe a couple ramp levels?
I think that would be a smart idea. Yes, Alder Henke?
Can we have a, a draft of some type of resol, some type of language at least, also at that point? Added to...
Tara's nodding?
Okay.
Okay. The other option, I think, if we were gonna look at ramp utilization, we also have municipal parking lots. I mean, not to say, I mean, people want covered parking, obviously, in the snow, but if you have to get like off the street, an open parking lot is also an option. So, could we look at that too and see maybe...
And, and you know, Alder, Alder McElhenney did bring that up, but I, I did not mention it because of the fact, you know, if you're gonna have a snow emergency on a city street, if you're, how are you gonna get your car in and out of a parking lot that, that's, you know, possibly gonna get a foot of snow in it, you know?
Yeah.
And so, so...
It's off the road. I mean, the getting out might not be so good, but it's off the road.
Getting in and out of it might not be so good, yeah. So, you know, you might have to get a tow truck or something to get it out, that's...
Or, or wait until somebody comes through and plows it, plows around, you know?
So, we can look at that too. We could ask the staff to look at the parking lots, whatever.
People don't have to use it, but if we would make it available, and people would understand what they're getting, it's not premium parking, but it's still off the road, so...
Yeah, we'd definitely look at those.
Okay.
Is that, is that the consensus of the committee to table this until next month? We get more information? Okay. Then we will move on to agenda item nine. Motion made by Alder Henke?
I'll, I'll move to adjourn.
Second by Alder Denny. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Everybody have a great evening.